The views expressed in the following program do not necessarily represent the views of this station or its management.
Welcome back once again, Real People, Real Life, Wichita, Kansas.
America!
Okay, we are just tickled pink, okay, to introduce you to one of my favorite, um, gosh, and we're politicians. You're so much more than that. So it's just one term, so many things that you are. Levanta?
Yes.
Thank you.
Absolutely. And I love that you're tickled pink. That's my sorority color.
Oh, hey! I didn't even know that. You originally were a school teacher.
I was a school teacher, um, for 35 years, all middle school. Uh, most of my career in one building, uh, other than when somebody made me go out and, uh, and, uh, apply to run a grant which put after-school programs into middle schools. So I did that as well. But 30 years in one school.
Wow.
Yes.
You know, I, I've seen you here and there, you know, at different things, and I've always, you know, I think we have some mutual friends, um, but, and I knew I was gonna end up saying this to you, one way or the other today. Um, anybody that knows me knows that I am a huge fan of JFK.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? Um, I don't think there's been a book written or a film made, a documentary that I probably haven't seen. Um, you remind me so much of the first female, uh, Jackie, his wife.
Thank you.
Um, the grace, the dignity, the, the hard work no matter what.
Absolutely.
And you everywhere, I mean, I, I, I don't know how you do it. And people think I have energy. And I'm like, wait, meet her. You are absolutely amazing.
Even Saturdays.
Yeah, you do. Well, I don't see that though with a lot of, some of the other council people, sorry. I don't see that, but you have a genuine care and concern for the community.
I, I think, I think teaching taught me public service. And so that's what I call myself, is a public servant. Um, I, I work for those that are out in the public. It's, it's not that I do things for myself. Even as we have groundbreakings for, for bike paths, I will bring somebody's child up to help me cut the ribbon, or to help me turn the dirt, because this is going to be what that child is gonna use, uh, in the years to come. So I work for the public.
Ah, ah, I adore you. Um, yeah, I mean, really, I mean, she is, you are the example, in my opinion, of, um, of anybody that wants to get into politics, they really need to inspire to be more like you and understand that, you know, who it is that they do work for. And you have always understood that. You're there for the people.
I do.
And you've always been there.
But I think we do have, uh, people in our community that are the same way, that will be looking for these opportunities in a couple of years. I, I will be done in a couple of years, but...
Who's running in your place?
Uh, we have about four or five.
We've had one of them on.
One of them was on, I think Brandon Johnson was on. So there, there are those that are looking for that opportunity. But, you know, the thing that I, I really like for people to understand is you work for all the city first.
Right.
Your responsibility is to every Wichita citizen first, and then you work on your district. And that's, that's truly the way I feel. So when we talk about a library, that's everybody's district. That's everybody's project. And, and so as we were discussing it with various people in the community, I wanted them to understand, this is everybody's library.
Right.
And the old one served me really, really well.
Right, right.
It's time for the young people that are coming up, it's time for them to have something that's new, something that's up to date.
Right, right. What's, is that one of your more favorite projects?
I have so many.
I was gonna say, I bet this would be a really long list if I asked that. Cool. But what's some more of them?
Well, uh, you know, if I could fix transit, I would fix transit, um, so that everybody would be happy to ride transit.
Yeah.
Look at Wichita State. Um, they incorporated the, uh, the ride, uh, you know, park and ride.
Right.
Why can't we, why can't we as Wichita do that?
Why couldn't we? That's a good question, yeah.
Why wouldn't that then say, "It's okay to ride transit. It's okay to ride the bus." But you can't label the bus as being for the homeless, or being for the poor, or being for this or that. In many cases, when you hear about transit, that's what you hear about. That's why people ride it.
I love the bus. I've rode it.
It's the label.
It's here. Here, because in Seattle, everybody rides transit, and it's provided, it's in abundance. Here, though, it isn't.
It's not.
And it's frowned upon.
It's a stigma, um, as to see you riding the bus. And so I want to break that.
We need to break that.
So that everybody realizes, everybody can ride the bus, and it's no big deal.
You just done something recently, haven't you, with the bus system and the, uh, high spotlighting, really a very famous person, with Rosa Parks.
We did, we did. Um, that was my latest project. And, uh, it was for Rosa Parks, because obviously Rosa Parks wanted to ride the bus after she got off from work, and she didn't wanna give up her seat. So just recently, we have, uh, wrapped one of our city buses to look like the bus that she rode in 1955 in Montgomery, I think it was. And so it is, it looks just like a bus. Uh, but on the side, it does talk about equality for all. And, uh, so we did that for a purpose. And inside the bus, there is a seat that is reserved for Rosa Parks. So her picture is on that seat. And again, it's a visual for kids. And along with wrapping that bus, we went to about five of the, um, middle schools, elementary schools as well. And then we had kids, what did Rosa Parks mean to you? If you're good at essay and, and research, then you write an essay. If you're good with artistic skills, then you do art, because all kids learn in different ways.
Exactly.
Um, and so then we rewarded those kids, um, with a, a money card. Uh, and we had winners. And, uh, the winning, winning, uh, poster is going to go on one of the sides of the buses. So if you ride a kid and your picture goes down the street on one side of the bus, how awesome is that?
Oh, and how proud Mom and Dad, oh my gosh, you know.
Absolutely. Well, and, and I was very proud. I mean, we bought the, uh, we had a press conference. We bought the, uh, winning principals in. They were very, they were very happy for their kids. And then our neighborhood, um, uh, community service person is taking their little cards out to the kids. And, and the first thing the principals wanna know is, is the bus coming to our school? When is it coming to our school? So it's a visual, it's a learning visual, and many, especially ladies, we are visual people.
Yeah, we are.
You told me, what intersection? What's there?
I know, I know. Come on, I told you that. You know, you can tell me how cute the puppy is all day long, but the minute I see that puppy, I'm in love.
It's like a while ago when you were talking about Tyler, and you were like, okay, Spangled, yeah, I know where it is.
I, I, yeah, visually see this, and that's a whole nother story.
Oh, come on, you guys do that sometimes too.
I have to do that, or I would have to.
Yeah, you do visual all the time.
So having taught for 35 years, you've probably seen a lot of different, just different ways of teaching how it's influenced people. And so you've got a lot of insight onto like, how to actually reach people.
Teach.
Yeah, teach.
Um, you treat those kids as if they are a good friend of yours. Um, you treat the kids, um, for instance, I did teach in a low-income school, and it's down on the south end of town, but I, my, my expectations were not low.
Right.
Um, my expectations were always the highest they could be. So, yeah, as I coached, and we would go to Wilbur maybe for a tournament, and all those little girls had on the same shoes, and this and that. And so I would never let my girls watch as they played someone else. I, I always kept them reserved. But I always told them, money doesn't have anything to do with how hard you play. And so we were a very, very good volleyball, very, very good track team. Um, now basketball, not so much, because I was there when girls first started basketball. We didn't do that well.
That's a big thing now, though.
But as a teacher, I, I think you have to realize that sometimes even teachers make mistakes. I never will forget, I called a young man out in front of his peers, in front of the class. And then eventually, I thought I won, 'cause I said, "Go out in the hallway. I'm just gonna send you up to the office." But then I began to think on my way out into the hall, "Wait a minute, you played a part in that." So I went out and I apologized to that young man, and he apologized to me. He came back to class, and that was it.
That was it.
That was it.
Respect.
It's respect.
Now you get to see those kids grow up, 'cause you had, you did that for so many years, and you get to see the, the effect of your influence.
Absolutely. Um, some of you may know one of my students, uh, he's the hitman from...
Oh, my goodness, that...
Ringo!
That's your...
That's my project.
He did a good job.
He loved talent shows. He would get up and sing country and western during, during the talent shows.
That is awesome.
Let me tell you a story about hitmen from adulthood.
But, but he was a good student. I, 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 I expected, uh, that no one cursed in my class, uh, no one cursed. If we went on field trip, because you would do push-ups, you would be penalized. Everybody had to learn to climb the rope. I'm hearing about that more now than anything. Why did you make us climb those ropes?
Oh, no!
That's my favorite.
I wasn't good at it, but I had to do it.
I was so fast up and down.
Yeah, I was scared.
Yeah, I, I don't have my gym clothes today.
I love your insight.
But, you know...
My worst doubt was middle school would have been when you had to dissect a frog.
Oh, no, I absolutely loved that. I was science freak.
I love science and math. Those were my, well, I was...
Just didn't wanna dissect.
Fantastic at math. I just didn't wanna kill anything.
Absolutely.
It was pretty good.
We had cats.
Oh, no, 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 no.
My cat was pregnant.
Oh, awesome. It was already dead. I know, yeah.
No, I kid you not.
We'll be back after our work with our restaurant sponsors.
I don't know how we got from transit.
Okay, but we will be.
But that project for transit is one that we just, uh, launched last week, and I'm just very, very excited about it. Um, and, uh, so it will be seen around town. Um, one of our sponsors is helping to pay for that. So it'll be around for at least six months to, uh, probably a year. But I want to do more things now with the, uh, public school system and have the kids be more involved. And that was one way that, that they could be involved and, uh, and receive funding.
We have two more segments, so you're not going anywhere, honey. Okay, but, uh, yeah, let's find out one of our restaurant sponsors. All right then. We'll be right back. Real people, real life.
Real People, Real Life is brought to you by these fine sponsors.
Alboro Cafe, like a vacation to Italy with Wichita's best Italian dining. Open Monday to Saturday. Happy hour, Monday to Thursday, 2:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. Enjoy our featured cocktails, lovely wines, and famous martinis. Alboro Cafe.
Easy Pay Auto Sales, 2305 South Broadway. Our goal is to make your next auto-buying experience nice and easy. We specialize in getting you the best prices with the most reasonable down payments. Bad credit, no credit, no worries. We keep it hassle-free and no crazy gimmicks. You can even call and make your payments over the phone with your credit or debit cards. Keeping it nice and easy for you at Easy Pay Auto Sales, 2305 South Broadway. Find us on Facebook.
When you look good, you feel amazing. Let 2NvMe help you. Straight wavy curls, volume, our 100% virgin hair is the best in the world. The perfect professional business look, the perfect fun lady social look, the perfect beautiful night on the town. You can be all of those and more with real hair extensions from 2NvMe. 6160 East 21st Street, North Suite 220. Buy online with free shipping at 2nvme.com. You deserve to feel fantastic.
Kiter Nursery Landscape Outlet located at 6441 South Broadway is your year-round growing headquarters. Every spring and fall, our greenhouses are full of the most beautiful flowers, trees, hanging baskets, and more. Sure to add beauty for years to come. We are also a gardener's dream come true. From veggies to herbs, we have the best. Decorative planting pots and yard art, the most in one place. Smoking barbecue wood to wood for your indoor and outdoor fireplaces. Kiter Nursery Landscape Outlet. Come grow with us. Find us on Facebook. Open seven days a week.
Hammond Liquor, home of the coldest beer in town and the lowest prices store-wide. For all your special events, your friends at Hammond Liquor have what you need. From beer, wines, spirits, champagne, and more. Open till 8:00 p.m. every Sunday. Hammond Liquor, West Kellogg and Tyler Road.
Hi, I'm Colton with the King's Kids at Credit King. We're celebrating the 11th year here with my dad and me and all these fine people. Wow, I wasn't even born yet.
I think it's really cool Credit King gives second and even third chances. Like Dad says, sometimes bad things happen to good people. He gets people with bad credit and super-nice cars and trucks. Wow, I wish I could get a second chance on that math test.
That's a great job today, son, and that's no go on that test.
Okay, we're back, rolling ahead. Yeah. Welcome back, Real People, Real Life. Once again, Wichita, Kansas.
Really good.
You two over there.
You're bad.
Well, you two.
I didn't say nothing.
Okay, so you've mentioned a couple projects already. Do you have any more that you're super excited about?
I am. I have one that's going to be dedicated, and it'll be coming up soon. Um, I'm an art fanatic, um, and so I love the arts, uh, whether it be performing, whether it be on canvas, or, or any other types of art. Um, and so I wanted art on one of my streets. It's a pretty bad street, but I still wanted art on it. And at first I said, "Okay, I've got boarded up houses. Let's paint those boards and put them back on the house." So that it's not just that wooden panel that's on the house. So that led me to a bicycle path. Um, and it's, uh, it was a railroad train, uh, track. And so we turned it into a bike path. Um, there are three, three areas in that bike path that have art and history.
Nice.
So for me, it was bringing art to the community. You're not gonna go down to the art. Okay, then I'm bringing the art to you. Um, so we have three points where we have art and where we have history. It is so awesome. Um, and we...
Can you tell everyone?
We have one at 17th and Oliver. 17th and Oliver is where we will do the dedication, and I'm gonna go over the top for the dedication as well. Um, now that one has some of your sports athletes, oh, Lynette Woodard, Barry Sanders. And it has their pictures and a brief description of who they are and what they did. And there's another one at 13th and Roosevelt. 13th and Roosevelt shows the world that the first civil rights sit-in occurred in Wichita, Kansas, at the Dockham Drug Store. So that tells that story, and it also has some of your local and state leaders. And then we have another pos point at 8th and Hillside. And we start out with some African-American art that is there, but we have Todd Whipple, who did some things, Janice Thacker, who did some things. Charles Davis's art is at the corner of 17th and Oliver. So I learned art and history all along that path.
I love it, yeah.
Um, and so we find so many people that look at that particular area, uh, as, as a destination point.
It is. So where does the bike path begin and where does it end?
Um, this one will start, uh, you know where Dog and Shake is, down near Central and Hydraulic in that area. And so it starts in that area, off of Hydraulic, and it goes all the way through. Uh, my goal is to meet up with Andover, so that Andover and...
I was gonna say, you have a really fantastic one out there.
Mm-hmm. And so that would be my goal, is for those to meet, so that Andover can ride the bus all the way in, or somebody can ride the bus, I mean, ride the, the trail, or walk the trail all the way out.
Is that also a train track made into a bike track?
Yes, yes.
That's amazing.
It is.
Are they gonna take that all the way out to Augusta?
I think so. I think that is the goal. I, I went to one of, uh, Andover's, uh, meetings, because you always have people who say, "No, I don't wanna bike that in my backyard." But so...
And I have a funny story. It really literally is almost in our backyard.
And it's in mine.
Our, um...
I have one behind my house.
Our family owns some houses that are right along that path. And it's kinda weird, you know, walking through the living room at night and hearing voices. You would think that'd be convenient, though.
Well, and, and we don't have lights. I mean, we have some antique lights in, in some of the spots. We don't have them in all. Now, I think we did put a couple of lights down through the neighborhood, just in case someone was walking in late evening. But we really don't want it to be used as that late-evening piece. But it took a lot for people to understand that this is actually going to bring value to your property.
Right.
Um, because in Andover, I had some really adamant people about not doing it. Uh, but we also have them here in Wichita. And so finally, um, everybody understood, this is gonna be an asset, and it's not gonna, not gonna hurt us.
It would warm my heart to see people out, being social, outside, you know what I mean? So I wouldn't, it wouldn't be upsetting to me to see people up and down that bike trail.
And, and even with this bike path, there are so many small tile that we have pasted, or I don't know how, uh, Tina Morano did this particular area. But people were able to bring her pictures of themselves, of, "This is my great-grandmother, and she lived to be, and she was in what area." And so those are all pasted all along that trail. And, uh, and so that was really awesome. And so what we also have are homeschool kids that are able to go to those destination spots. Yeah, and that, that has become a homework session for them. So they can look on these tile. Because it would just take you a while to understand all that was there. But to look at the athletes that performed, and, and that's historic at 17th and Oliver, and, and then to go to the 13th and Roosevelt and the Dockham Drug Store situation is there, and it tells all that story. So it's just educational, is what it is, art and history.
One thing, one thing I found out about that neighborhood really kind of blew my mind. Um, I was talking with Lynette Woodard last weekend.
Oh, yes.
Um, and she talked about how, in that neighborhood, it was her family growing up with the Love family, with Barry Sanders' family, with Antoine Carr, and all these people. And that's just, you know, sort of the more...
Oh, I grew up in that area. Lynette wrote down the street.
And she mentioned you, and she met, and I was like, "That's insane, like, all this, all these people." And then she talked about the, the community culture, which is something I've been working with, with the Love family, about how, you know, they were kind of a, very much a hub of the whole neighborhood.
Absolutely. And, and it's, that, that's why when I go out, especially speaking to our kids, uh, we all grew up in zip code areas 67214, which many people say, "Oh, that's bad. They're not going to amount to. They're not gonna be able to do this." All of the above.
Some of the most famous people in the history of the last 50 years, the kings just came out of this neighborhood. So I was going, "Well, there's the movie right there about how cool Wichita is."
And that's why I tell kids that story. So when I go out and tell them, "Dare to dream," I dare to dream. And, and I am where I'm supposed to be. Now, you ask where my next spot?
Yeah.
Wherever I'm led, wherever you lead me, that's where I go.
Not the governor's mansion.
I'm not, I'm not gonna rule that out. I got somebody who wants that.
It's not done, is it?
I really believe that, because even coming, retiring from, from school, I was like, "Yes, I got my scrapbook ready. I got everything ready." But then there was this calling, and I was like, "Are you kidding?" And then I got to the place where I was like, "I don't wanna lose." And so then I really began to fight.
Wait a minute, hold on. We talked about, Levanta, if you remember, back when we had, uh, I think, I think it was Brother Bob.
Yeah.
We had Brother Bob love on, talking about the upcoming, um, Love story and so much of the things that are going on. And we knew that we were gonna be talking to you soon. And I think we went on, I was, Rhodey and I, I know for sure, went on camera and said, "Okay, here's the deal. We're gonna be having a city council person that we completely adore, respect. We wanna have a Love Family Day of Appreciation."
Yes.
And I know that we did this, or a week, or a month, whatever.
A month.
Now, when Carl, I always, I had a blast dealing with Carl, our, our previous mayor. He was a really fun guy. I have a funny story to tell you. Um, he showed up at, uh, the Delano, little tiny farm and art market.
Yes.
And I felt so bad. There was a lady there, and she thought that she had all of her paperwork ready. She was gonna sell duck eggs. And I love duck eggs, okay?
I do.
And farm-fresh baby eggs, all that stuff. Anyway, so, but one signature was missing from her form. And I walked over, and I said, "Carl, I came here specifically to get some duck eggs." And he goes, " Duck eggs? What's going on?" You know, so he went over there, and he checked, you know, the cooler, we're good, the temperatures and everything, and he goes, "Go ahead." And I was just like, "Oh, thank you." And this one was just, I mean, that was one of the cool things with Carl. I mean, he showed up at different places.
But that's it?
I know.
That's what a public servant is.
Exactly, exactly.
That's what we should be doing.
And he would stop by downtown. I just, I always adored him. But he helped us get, um, the motor, I think it was Motorcycle Awareness Month for the month of March.
Yes.
So I was kind of thinking about that and thinking, "How cool would it be?" And I think Wichita could embrace some love. Um, "How cool would it be for the city council in, in honor of the Love Family movie that's coming out, documentary? Can we have a Love Day, a Love Week?"
And even to put a little clip maybe on, because you know, we have the big panels for, for viewing.
Right, right.
Just a little clip on there of what that's all about.
I think I got a clip.
Do you have one?
I don't really get a hold of that.
I probably have a clip on a, on a flash drive.
Well, we just, we just need to talk with the communications, um, and that's Ken Evans and Van Williams and, and that group. Talk to them about how we can do that, and then we'd have to get the information, the, and, and get it in as soon as possible. When are you looking, what, when are you looking?
Whenever, we can soon.
Um, are you gonna wait until Sinbad comes back?
Well, Sinbad's coming back. I mean, we're in the process of filmmaking the film now, and we're shooting for the end of this year.
Okay.
Um, hopefully we'll have everything shot by the end of the summer. But it's a long process.
Certainly.
So far, it's sixteen years long. So it's at the beginning of the end.
Well, I know it, but, yeah, we all came out of that one area.
I should go down and switch together, talk to the communication.
Yes, talk to Ken, and, uh, if you see your mayor, talk to your mayor as well.
Oh, absolutely.
And to let him know.
You've mentioned all of these projects you have going on, and all these things that you're doing for us. What can the public do to help you achieve these goals?
Well, one of my last projects that I'm really proud of, though, is League 42.
Yes, 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 yes.
I love League 42. It's, it's in one of, uh, my older parks, uh, one that was pretty much dying, uh, because the kids had all moved out. And so Bob Lutz came, and he was like, "Let's start a baseball league for kids," because inner-city kids don't play. You know, my son, my kids play at West Urban, way out on the west side of town, hundreds of dollars, hundreds of... Love you, West Urban. But everybody can't afford that.
Right.
And so those kids were not playing baseball. And so we, we started baseball there. Uh, we started with 200. Second year, it was 400. We narrow up to almost 500 kids.
Really?
So much so that we're actually going to add another diamond.
Really?
So it's, it's so much more than baseball, because it becomes a mentoring opportunity, uh, because we take the kids on field trips. So it's so much more than just baseball. It's learning. It's, it's, it's learning.
Socializing.
It's socializing. Uh, all of the things that we want our kids to do, but maybe not all of them have those skills when they start out.
League 42 is a great league.
It is, I know, yeah. Why is it called League 42?
Jackie Robb.
Jackie Robbins.
My buddy Dan, who used to do sports radio, he was coaching over there. He had, sad story, turns good, spoiler alert. He, he had his, uh, equipment stolen out of his car, and he went to play it against sports, and give them a shout-out. And he said, "Take whatever you need, whatever happens." Well, they ended up finding it all, 'cause the guy tried to come to play it again to...
Yeah.
So he got all new stuff. He said, "Just, just take all the new stuff. We'll take the old. You can have your old baseball and go take a bad sack." But, so he, he told them what it was for. It wasn't just him and a bunch of friends were getting together.
We've had so many incredible people throughout the community to help us out with that league. And you know, they didn't, we didn't start out with just a ragtag t-shirt and a pair of jeans, and we started out from head to toe. They were outfitted from head to toe.
Really?
And so it made them feel special and proud to put on that uniform. So that's another area that I'm... But as far as people helping, I think it's just keeping an eye on our neighbors and, and being aware of what's going on around us, um, in the community. One part of the community that I serve, we have illegal dumping, especially on some of our vacant lots or abandoned houses.
Hold on, don't leave, 'cause I'm gonna have you...
Don't leave, Dad.
You're gonna go anywhere. Okay, we're gonna take a quick break. We'll be right back.
Real People, Real Life is brought to you by these fine sponsors.
Alboro Cafe, like a vacation to Italy with Wichita's best Italian dining. Open Monday to Saturday. Happy hour, Monday to Thursday, 2:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. Enjoy our featured cocktails, lovely wines, and famous martinis. Alboro Cafe.
Easy Pay Auto Sales, 2305 South Broadway. Our goal is to make your next auto-buying experience nice and easy. We specialize in getting you the best prices with the most reasonable down payments. Bad credit, no credit, no worries. We keep it hassle-free and no crazy gimmicks. You can even call and make your payments over the phone with your credit or debit cards. Keeping it nice and easy for you at Easy Pay Auto Sales, 2305 South Broadway. Find us on Facebook.
When you look good, you feel amazing. Let 2NvMe help you. Straight wavy curls, volume, our 100% virgin hair is the best in the world. The perfect professional business look, the perfect fun lady social look, the perfect beautiful night on the town. You can be all of those and more with real hair extensions from 2NvMe. 6160 East 21st Street, North Suite 220. Buy online with free shipping at 2nvme.com. You deserve to feel fantastic.
Kiter Nursery Landscape Outlet located at 6441 South Broadway is your year-round growing headquarters. Every spring and fall, our greenhouses are full of the most beautiful flowers, trees, hanging baskets, and more. Sure to add beauty for years to come. We are also a gardener's dream come true. From veggies to herbs, we have the best. Decorative planting pots and yard art, the most in one place. Smoking barbecue wood to wood for your indoor and outdoor fireplaces. Kiter Nursery Landscape Outlet. Come grow with us. Find us on Facebook. Open seven days a week.
Hammond Liquor, home of the coldest beer in town and the lowest prices store-wide. For all your special events, your friends at Hammond Liquor have what you need. From beer, wines, spirits, champagne, and more. Open till 8:00 p.m. every Sunday. Hammond Liquor, West Kellogg and Tyler Road.
Credit King Auto Sales, Kansas' largest buy-here, pay-here auto dealer, is celebrating 11 years in Wichita. We're known for our super-nice and largest inventory of cars, trucks, and SUVs to choose from.
Did you know our service department is open to the public? Our trained staff can do it all when it comes to auto repairs. Since we're celebrating our 11-year anniversary, how about an $11 oil change super-service deal for you?
What are you waiting for?
$11 oil changes going on now at Credit King, at the King's Corner, 31st Street, South and Broadway.
Go CreditKing.com.
See us on Facebook or call 524-KING. Filter and oil not included.
Welcome back once again, Real People, Real Life with Levanta. You are, I, I'm never gonna be able to say this enough, doesn't matter how long I live, but you are a phenomenal lady.
Thank you, thank you.
Absolutely phenomenal lady.
I love what I do.
You do, and it shows, it shows. Um, I like that governor idea. Okay, um, anyway.
Girl, please, yes.
I'm not getting around it.
Yeah, get that boy.
Something else the people can do is vote.
Absolutely. Absolutely. People need to register.
Come on.
To vote. This is, this year coming up is a big year.
What do you think about the registering to vote thing here, especially if we're trying to have like federal, you have to have a federal I D. to be able to vote? So I mean, you have to have a pass.
No.
Or they get knocked down.
No, I thought I was, uh.
Well, one of the things that we're looking at right now, um, as a, a Kansas Black leadership organization, we're trying to say same-day registration to vote. So if I pull up and I'm, you know, I, I didn't get a chance to register, let me register right here so I can just go on and vote. Uh, if you have, if you have my, if you have my driver's license, my birth certificate, if you have all of the information that's needed, why can't I register onsite and vote?
Why can't you?
That's it. Because, because. Right now, we're asking for that in Topeka. And so you, you know, you know.
Is someone somewhere trying to discourage voting?
Pretty much. Possibly.
And, and but that's the thing is that you had people who gave their lives to vote, okay? Who gave their lives to vote. So as I just took a group of kids to see the Salma movie, and we try to tell kids that voting should not be taken that lightly because so many people lost their lives just to say I could vote.
That's right.
And, and that's so important. So you, in some ways, you have people trying to move back to who it was.
And that's for both women and people of color.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely, absolutely.
Uh, women voters, what, 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 what we called the other day?
Uh, the League of Women?
Mm-hmm, which one? Yeah. I just know I.
Oh, they're awesome.
Yeah. Well, that's not what the governor said.
No. Leave them alone.
That's changed.
I, I, I have been not very nice to that man for long enough. Okay.
You all have seen on the internet about you.
I know, no, 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 I know.
Do you?
No, I know, no, 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 no.
I am. I'll be in DC, um, next weekend. Um, and so I, I have been asked, uh, to participate in a Washington, uh, news briefing. So, um, I said, yes, and, and I'm excited to do that. But when I go out of town, I really, really go and I work, I work, I work. And I go from sunup until sundown. So I sit this year, um, on the National League of Cities. I'm on the board. So I'll have, uh, I'll have some, some duties there as well as another committee that they just formed and it's called REAL. And that is, um, uh, it talks about race.
Right.
And sometimes it's hard to talk about race. It's, it's hard sometimes to sit everybody at the table and say, we've gotta talk about racial equity, um, and leadership. And that's what we're going to be talking about. Um, because if we can help everybody understand each other, and that was what I taught in my classroom as well. When I go into the locker room, we would discuss hair. We would discuss the differences. We would discuss owning up and, and being proud of where you're from. So if you gave me a name that you wanted me to call you Sally, but your name is really something else, Tran Nguyen, then let people know that I'm really Tran. And, and be proud of who you are and, and what your ethnicity is.
I agree, man.
That was, that was my teaching to my girls in the locker room so they wouldn't fight.
We have a locker room.
I'd give the locker room with them. And so we'd be discussing and we'd be talking. So I didn't have to fight.
Did you, you know, we, I asked you, I want to, what your thought about this because, um, it was recently reported in the Wichita Eagle. Um, and it was kinda, you know, not that I, I, I'm not doubting their statistics or anything like that, but it was ranked Wichita, Kansas, number five. And the, uh, income, you know, that just, the, from the absolute lower income, the absolute highest and, and that, that.
No, in between.
And there's that gap.
Yeah. And it was, there was a lot.
There's that gap.
It brought out a lot of hate.
Mm-hmm.
And people were, you know, and of course, and it, and it just honed in on what zip code you just mentioned that some of my best friends grew up in. And look where they are now.
Absolutely, absolutely.
How did you feel about that? Because that hurt my feelings.
Well, I, 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 I look at that from a standpoint of who did you talk to?
Right.
Who did you talk to?
Right.
Uh, and where did you get your information? You really had to make sure that everybody was at the, at the table when you were having that discussion. And I think that's what we're going to be talking about in DC as we talk about REAL, is how do we sit down and have these conversations? We've already started in some of the groups that I'm in when I, when I go to the National League of Cities. And it's a very uncomfortable position. Um, but yet still, it's something that has to take place. Because it's not always race equity that we're looking at. We're looking at equity across the board. So if I'm tall and you might need a box to see what I'm seeing over there, that's equity.
Yeah.
You know, as far as women versus men, that's equity.
Right.
Um, and so those are the things that we're going to be looking at and addressing. But obviously, it's going to take some training in order for us to go back and say, we're gonna be talking about race because it's, it's not always an easy topic.
You know, we, we talked about this in an earlier show. Um, Seth and I were at a lunch a couple of weeks back, I can't remember. But, um, when we were talking about the United States Constitution and, and a lot of that stuff, um, you know, and it had been brought to our attention, you know, would we, you know, would we, would, would we as a show take on race and racial issues and, and have a discussion about Ferguson? And, um, I said, first of all, we have done several shows and we.
Culture.
Multicultural.
Yes.
I can't talk about shoes I didn't walk in. I can't talk about a life that I don't know.
That's it.
Okay? But somebody can certainly come on and talk about it and educate us.
That's it. Well, you'll find that a lot of those that come out of the six, seven, two, one, four, I, I was the oldest of nine kids.
Right.
The oldest of nine kids. So I have people that say, okay, oldest of nine, six, seven, two, one, four, how did you? And, and that's why I do that for kids. I help them to understand. And you're right, that's the mentality.
It's a mentality.
And so that's why you have to have everybody at the table explaining the same thing in the same, in the same way. Because I probably would, you know, how could you get to that position from this position?
Right.
And so those are the conversations we have to have.
It's that dare to dream.
It's the dare to dream.
Because if you can't see it, you can't achieve it.
That's exactly it. That's exactly it.
But sometimes I wonder, and I know that I kind of brought this up, is there, I, I wonder sometimes if we could change some of the verbiage. Okay? Get rid of some of the hate speech and the labeling. I'm really, really sick of that, to tell you the truth. I'm sick of it. Um, so we had made a decision that we were going to take this as a more, um, a different approach.
Sure.
Give us your, your cultural background. We, we went into foods and, and different lifestyles and just, and we've done several of them actually. And it, it was a way more better learning experience. However, excuse me, I did state, you know, because these people of a, you know, political organization asked us to step forward and do this, how would you feel? I mean, I, I have a dear friend of my husband and I's, and he's probably in his seventies, Charles, um, who's very familiar with that zip code.
Mm-hmm.
Um, his kids are all in college. Um, he did do a little stint in prison. Um, super nice guy, will give you the shirt off of his back. Now, I think if I were to go to him and say, you know, I took him with me to different, no, you're right, seminars and things, you wanna talk about serious racial issues, let me let you talk to my friend. Because he can talk to you after his seventy years of, of walking in those shoes. But I don't know.
But you talk about equity, that's where the plane crashed, right in front of Lynette Woodard's house, right down the street. My brother was going to the store at that time. And so he, um, he, he was affected by it. Um, the gasoline got on his nylon jacket and it had begun to catch fire. And so he was there. Um, but a gentleman stopped, and he was a Caucasian, and took my brother and admitted my brother into a hospital. We had no idea where he was that entire time. It was just chaotic. But those are the kinds of things that we as citizens need to learn to do. We are taught not to like, if, if you watch little kindergartners play.
Yeah.
Play is play. I don't care who it is.
You, you, exactly. So is it, is it, here's my problem. I feel like it's more of a, a money issue. I believe it's more the rich to the poor. That's what divides us, honestly.
In, in a sense, but even in the middle school that I taught in, they were all poor. You know, they, they, but I never told them that, Greg, I didn't tell you you were poor. But we never, because then you begin to say, oh, I'm poor, I can't.
Right, right.
You know, and so.
Well, I'm not saying that to use it as an excuse. I'm just saying I see it dividing people.
But people can't see it because of money sometimes. You're exactly right. But I see so many people out there though, that, that don't look at that first.
Right.
And, and there are some people that I work with that do have money and that do understand. Um, you know, and so I, I look at it from, from both perspectives. But, you know, growing up in that particular area, um, that was just my lifestyle. I didn't know where I was going to college. I just knew that I was going to college. Um, and I had a teacher who, uh, really took, uh, a liking to quite a few of us and made sure that we were going to college. She even came to my graduation. Uh, Hunter Health Clinic is now named after her family because she was Miss Hunter. Um, and so those kids and all kids just have to have somebody who says, I care about you. Well, I took it upon myself to always show that. So much so that when I was running for mayor, some of my former students built a page for me. And it just gave me, it gives me goosebumps still. But, um, but they wanted everybody, go vote if you've never voted, vote now, blah, blah, blah. Ms. Williams, Coach Williams. Um, so, so.
I voted for you.
We were, we were, we were always a, a family. Um, and, and I, I, I saw the kids before I saw what money they had or where they came from. And I try to tell kids that today. It doesn't matter where you come from.
Exactly.
Zip code doesn't determine who you are. It's a distraction.
I agree, I agree. So we need to have a little more, I, I just, considering the folks and what they were kind of asking, I would love to have a conversation.
I just wanna do something on Ferguson or anything like that because we don't know the deal.
Right, we were there.
You were there?
No, I was not there. That's what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, that's why I tried to explain to them.
Absolutely, absolutely. I have a son that's a police officer. So, I mean, you know, and, and, and even that right now is very, very strained, uh, for them. I don't even wanna talk about the young lady that I just saw in the newspaper. But, um, but I, I mean, I pray for him every day that he's safe. Has he ever had to pull a gun? He's never told me if he has. Um, he, um, that it just scares me.
I've heard really good things about him. Um, because we all have, well, some of us have family members that are in, um, police, in law enforcement. So, yeah.
And so he loves what he does. I mean, he played basketball at Wichita State and, um, was behind the camera at Channel Ten. Um, but he wanted to be in front of the camera. And so it was moving too slow. He was not a patient person.
Oh, wow.
And so he is now doing something that he actually loves to do.
That is so cool.
We'll see how that works out. But we are, we're having trouble recruiting.
Oh, that's what we heard. Cerberus Drive, yeah.
He was gonna come back and you were talking.
Oh, you're gonna get the new chief?
Yeah.
Well, we're hoping to, yeah.
We have the folks that have a coffee with the, uh, coffee.
Coffee with coffee.
Yep, they're gonna be here next week.
And, um, I think you're really gonna enjoy him. I, I think you really will.
Yeah.
Um, he's been nothing but out in the community ever since he got here.
Yeah, really, yeah.
Oh, he was telling me about all the, the group, about all the write-around you did.
Yeah, yeah. I've been hearing about the really amazing and positive things, you know, and it's absolutely.
Well, he brought, that was one of his strengths, community, community and delusion.
Okay, well, there's this crazy guy back here behind the camera going, hurry up, hurry up. Levanta, thank you so much.
Well, now you know where I am. Let me know when you.
We want to have you back.
Absolutely, absolutely. We didn't even talk about all the stuff in my folder.
I know. Well, we gotta bring you back. You gotta come back. You just have to come back. Got too much going on.
We'll be back.
Okay.
It was, it was very good. I loved it.
I'd love to have you come back, please. Absolutely. Adored you for so long.
And maybe when Endover connects to.
Absolutely. Oh, maybe an onsite.
Yeah.
Well, maybe we can get, uh, the, uh, Love Thing going.
Oh, yeah, you have to get that going.
It's going, it's going free.
That needs to be included on that trail, I think.
Yeah. Well, you know, and we didn't put any of our, other than, um, Carla Burns. Uh, Carla Burns because there was another, uh, um, oh God, now you caught me off guard. But Carla Burns is probably the only entertainer that's up there.
But I, I think you're right.
But we want media up there that have played an important part. And we also want those that are in entertainment. And Rudy and that group, that's, that's there.
That's city history, that's city history. So big time.
That is history. I love that. Because black history is American history.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Please not, let's not forget that. We will be right back.
We'll have a little beep and sing with them.
Real People, Real Life is brought to you by these fine sponsors.
Alboro Cafe, like a vacation to Italy with Wichita's best Italian dining. Open Monday to Saturday. Happy hour, Monday to Thursday, two P M. to six P M. Enjoy our featured cocktails, lovely wines, and famous martinis. Alboro Cafe.
Easy Pay Auto Sales, twenty-three oh five South Broadway. Our goal is to make your next auto buying experience nice and easy. We specialize in getting you the best prices with the most reasonable down payments. Bad credit, no credit, no worries. We keep it hassle-free and no crazy gimmicks. You can even call and make your payments over the phone with your credit or debit cards. Keeping it nice and easy for you at Easy Pay Auto Sales, twenty-three oh five South Broadway. Find us on Facebook.
When you look good, you feel amazing. Let Two Envy Me help you. Straight wavy curls, volume. Our one hundred percent virgin hair is the best in the world. The perfect professional business look, the perfect fun lady social look, the perfect beautiful night on the town. You can be all of those and more with real hair extensions from Two Envy Me. Sixty-one sixty East Twenty-first Street, North Suite Two Twenty. Buy online with free shipping at twenvme.com. You deserve to feel fantastic.
Kider Nursery Landscape Outlet located at sixty-four forty-one South Broadway is your year-round growing headquarters. Every spring and fall, our greenhouses are full of the most beautiful flowers, trees, hanging baskets, and more. Sure to add beauty for years to come. We are also a gardener's dream come true. From veggies to herbs, we have the best. Decorative planting pots and yard art the most in one place. Smoking barbecue wood to wood for your indoor and outdoor fireplaces. Kider Nursery Landscape Outlet, come grow with us. Find us on Facebook, open seven days a week.
Hammond Liquor, home of the coldest beer in town and the lowest prices storewide. For all your special events, your friends at Hammond Liquor have what you need. From beer, wines, spirits, champagne, and more. Open till eight P M. every Sunday. Hammond Liquor, West Kellogg and Tyler Road.
Credit King Auto Sales, Kansas' largest buy here, pay here auto dealer is celebrating eleven years right here in Wichita. Our way of saying thank you is giving you our eleven dollars equal sign and drive. That's right, just eleven dollars. You are driving off happy, happy. Bad credit, no credit, no problem. We don't judge anyone by their credit score. The King is celebrating, you're saving money. It's our eleven-year anniversary with eleven dollars. And you are driving your next set of wheels. Credit King at the King's Corner, Thirty-first Street South and Broadway. Check us out at GoCreditKing.com and on Facebook. Call us at five-two-four KING. A sales tax subject to application approval.
And welcome back to Real People, Real Life. We are here on location on South Broadway at Kider Nursery.
Yes.
Yay!
This place is awesome, isn't it?
Oh, man. I was gonna say, I love the yard art. We'll talk about that.
We'll get to that, we'll get to that. Well, Jeannie, you're one of the owners. Um, basically, you and your husband, right?
Yeah, Richard and I are the owners of Kider Nursery. We've been here nine years. This is Erica.
Hi, Erica. You guys have been busy.
We have been busy.
Yeah, and it's just now kind of getting into that season. I mean.
Gearing up for.
Gearing up.
Gearing up.
Gearing up. So we've got the, the, the herbs and the veggies. And you're getting in your hanging baskets, which are great for Mother's Day gifts. Um, I know I got something for my dad for his birthday, one of your fire pits.
Awesome.
He's gonna die, he's gonna love it, okay? So yeah, I'm gonna get that over to him right away. Um, what are some of the things that you've seen change over the last nine years that you guys have been here?
Our size.
No kidding?
Definitely. Because when we first started our nursery, we started out with cinder blocks, fence railing, wooden snow fence zip-tied to it. And that's what we used as our tables.
Wow. You've grown so much.
So we graduated from that to that.
So all this, all this. And now the woods, okay, a lot of people don't, maybe don't even understand this, but you have wood all year round. That sounds good, doesn't it? You got wood all year round, dude.
Yeah, boy, I tell you what. Sounds like a commercial you need a lot of disclaimers on.
I know, right? Exactly. But I mean, there's, the, the wood is for not just your indoor fireplaces, but also for your chimeneas and also for your barbecues.
Now, for your smokers, right, over there?
Yes.
Different, that's one of the first things I saw.
I figured you would.
Wait, cherry wood? How does that work for smoking? Is it pretty good?
Oh, it's awesome. They say that most smokers that they smoke, they use the hickory or the pecan or the oak. And then they throw in like a stick of cherry and it puts a glaze on the meat.
Wow.
It's good, it's good.
I've tried some. It's really good.
Okay.
Yeah, so wood all year round. So even if you're snowing in December and you're gonna go out there and brave that and fire up the smoker, fire up the grill.
Women in snow knee-deep. What are you talking about?
Oh, I have too. I was gonna say, we barbecue year-round.
Remember, anytime.
Yeah, that you can barbecue.
Negative forty, it doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter. It's always a good time to barbecue. One of the things that I think is just absolutely priceless is some of the yard art. Tell me, I mean, come on, this is some.
There's some great stuff out there. I was, I was filming it and cracking up over there, like the, the cows.
The cows.
And especially with the chickens and then the flying pigs over there. I love the flying pigs. And then the, the goats are hilarious too.
Yeah, when the wind blows, they faint.
Yeah.
They're fainting goats.
We call them our fainting goats.
I love fainting goats. I may just, until I can find a real fainting goat, I may just get one of those and let the wind make it, make it, you know, pop over. But everything, I mean, did you see the, uh, what's that, seven, eight-foot tall rooster?
It's eight foot.
Eight foot tall. Wow.
It's a booger to put back up when the wind's blowing. So when it goes down, it stays down.
Well, what about those, those, uh, long steer, uh, grills?
Barbecue grills?
Barbecue grills. Are they, they're pretty heavy.
Yeah, it takes like two, three people. Yeah, it takes like two, three people to move it.
Okay, I was gonna say, the wind doesn't blow, that one's never very easy.
Only if a hurricane come through, I think.
After you close the lid, it'll blow smoke out its nose, it's like a Roomba.
Oh, now that's priceless.
I'm gonna have to get one of those.
Yeah, yeah, that's a must.
Or Robyn, you're gonna have to get one of those for me.
Oh, yeah, is that it? Is that how that works?
It's my birthday coming up too, in like 10 months.
Only because it fits in the back of my truck, right? Is that it?
Yeah.
Okay, that's it, that's it. You know, and I was laughing because we, we were hanging out earlier this week with some smaller kids, and they kept playing their little video games, I'm like, what are you guys playing? And of course, it was Angry Birds, you know, and so when we first got here, I was like, look at all of those cool birdhouses. No more Angry Birds, we're gonna have Happy Birds, okay? Because they're gonna have those, those little birdhouses, they're a darling. I mean, I can't think of anything from, you know, the herbs, the veggies, the, the flowers, the trees, the different plants, it's a wide variety. What do you usually do the most?
Our four-pack annuals and veggies and stuff, we sell them for $1.69 for a four-pack, and you get a... Or you can get a flat for $14.99, that's a variety of anything, you can mix it with tomatoes, peppers, your four-pack annuals. You don't have to have all just veggies or all just annuals, you can mix and match.
Mix and match, that's a dang good deal. I am definitely getting my tomatoes and my jalapenos today.
So with the weather as weird as it's been this year, I mean, in theory, you could have almost planted like two months ago, but then we get one freeze and bam, everything's dead, that happens to me every year. So what are you suggesting, I mean, is now about a decent time to buy? Because normally, we would say, the 15th of April, you're safe.
Yeah.
Two years ago, it snowed on May 1st as I was coming back from Fleetwood Mac in Tulsa.
Right.
You know, so what, I mean, is now a good time to buy? Would you want to plant now? I mean, you could buy it now.
You can buy it now, but I would not plant them in the ground, just due to the freeze that we...
Freeze could not, yeah, it could have still.
Because we've been zapped twice, yep.
Yeah.
Back to back. Until the 13th of April.
Yeah, I've been nailed the last couple of years.
Yeah, we did too, we did too.
We got nailed twice this year.
Right.
Don't cover with plastic because it'll burn your plant.
I've heard that, so, okay, good.
I've done that too.
I was gonna say, I've been there, done that, and now I'm like, I have to, in the back of my head, um...
Because we did, we made the mistake when we first opened, we had, we didn't know plants from a hole in the ground. Didn't know what they did or why they were doing what they were doing. Well, so I pulled them off the shelf and I put them underneath, well, about two or three days later, they're just as perky as... Well, hell, they're a shade plant, you know?
Learned something new on that one, didn't you?
We learned, our first year when we had the nursery, we covered with plastic because they said it's supposed to freeze, and we put heat lamps on it. Wherever that plastic touched, it burned the plant.
Wow.
Killed it, gone.
Not cool, not cool, don't want to do that, well, don't want to do it again.
No.
You know?
And succulents you don't want to put?
Ever, no, 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 no.
They'll turn to mush and never come back.
No, I've lost a couple of beautiful succulents, I mean, one was like 100 years old. God, that was just sickening, I mean, succulents can get pretty old, some of them, you know, yeah, they're beautiful, but, yeah, they don't do very well in the, in the freezing. What's your hours?
Mondays, or Saturday through Mon, Monday through Saturday, sorry. Saturday through Monday, or Monday through Saturday.
Monday through Saturday, okay, that works.
I got it right.
Yeah.
But we're open nine to seven.
Okay.
Sunday, 12 to 6.
Seven days a week.
Seven days a week.
Wow, if, and I know too, a big thing that's kind of, kind of being like this new thing now is planting in the hay bales.
It's actually the straw bales.
Straw bales, yeah.
A lot of people are starting to do that, a lot of people are, who don't want to take the time to till up the ground, they just want to bring the straw bales in and plant in it, it's become a big fad for a lot of gardeners.
You know, and then I think the cool thing...
How's it considered the growth of it?
They love them, they love them, yeah, I've been doing a lot of research, I'm gonna try this route, but that way, I mean, you don't have to have like a big garden area, even if you have an apartment with just a small balcony or whatever, throw a couple bales of hay on that sucker or straw, and probably get about, what, three to five plants in a...
You can probably put three, three plants.
Three plants, okay, that's kind of what I was thinking was three.
Like if you're talking tomato plants?
Mm-hmm.
Or peppers.
It's supposed to be like 18 to 36 inches apart, right?
Yeah, so...
So you can get like...
Yeah, I think three would make me happy, but, I mean, how much easier would that be?
Well, you can move them too.
Exactly, exactly, you know?
You can't move your raised garden.
No, you can't, no, no, I've got plenty of those, but did you guys ever get into doing the crates? You know, the shipping crates? Well, a few years back, that was kind of big, you know, so we went and picked up some of those shipping crates, and then we laid down the tarp on the ground, you know, and then put the potting soil, so there's no weeds, and it just grows right straight down each one of those little piles or whatever you want to call it. Worked great. So if you have people coming and wanting to know about pallet, gardening?
The pallet gardens, we do that, yeah.
You do do that, okay, good, so you...
We sell the pallets and then they come in and buy them and take them home and do it.
And you know the other one that I tried that I absolutely love?
Thanks for that loud truck.
Is the, the old tires, I mean, we're gonna start recycling some of these things these days, right? But I think it's our, our potatoes, yeah, holy moly, every year I gotta add another tire and more dirt.
I think it's the greatest way you can grow potatoes, you don't have to do any of the labor of digging it into the ground, you just plant them like layers, and then at the end of the season, you knock them over and there's your potatoes.
There you go.
Wait a minute, I got a bunch of tires, now, how do you do it?
Oh, yeah.
You just take a tire, put some dirt in it, plant your first level of potatoes, take another tire, put some more dirt in it, plant your next level of potatoes, keep going up until you have this pile as you want it.
The tower.
Uh-huh, and your lowest potatoes are gonna be your biggest potato when you harvest, and your top potatoes will be your small potato when you harvest. So you get big bacon potatoes at the bottom and new potatoes at the top.
It's, Rhodey, I have them in my backyard, and I love them, I have them in my backyard, love them, love them.